All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. This evening's meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And if I could have a motion to open our school committee meeting this evening?
So moved.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, before we get started doing the dual role call for attendance. Yeah, Mrs. Gomes is not here this evening. She's attending a finance committee meeting that's happening at the same time tonight.
With Ms. McIntyre.
With, yes, with Mr. McIntyre, our business manager. But go ahead. And Mr. Tebbs?
Yes.
Mr. Pitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downey?
Yes.
Eric?
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So we'll start with the approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants. If I could request a motion of approval, please, for the minutes of November 15th, 2022?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Second. Any questions or discussion? No, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstanding.
Standing. Okay, thank you. One upstanding. And the approval of payroll and warrants, please.
Also.
Second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Do we have anyone to sign up for delegation this evening? No? Okay. No public comment? No old business, so we'll move on to new. Okay, let over to you, Dr. Bailey. Okay?
First up in your packet, you have the personnel report. Since last month, we have added one new staff member and one staff member resigned. Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. As you know, we've been trying to highlight different curriculum at both buildings. This month, we wanted to highlight early numeracy, and the math CIA team will be presenting tonight. And I would like to call Julie Paceto, who is the assistant principal. She will be introducing her staff from the CIA team. They will be reviewing the mound constructional shifts at Acushnet Elementary.
Hi, Madam Chair and members of the school committee, Dr. Bailey. Good evening. I'm Juliana Paceto. I'm the assistant principal over at Acushnet Elementary School. Nice to see you and thank you for having us tonight. So I am a former math teacher for many, many years. Math is kind of my thing, so I was happy to discuss math with you all tonight and see if maybe I could get you excited about math. So I'm going to ask Kelly Cole and Melissa Canoyer to actually come on up for a second to join me.
Sure.
So Ms. Chesney had a family emergency, so she's not here this evening. But this is Kelly Cole and Melissa Canoyer. Kelly is a first-grade teacher and Melissa is a fourth-grade teacher. And we're fortunate enough to have them both here at Acushnet Elementary School. So there is what's called a math continuum. So it starts with each one of these standards for math built upon another. They might not be in the same umbrella of standards. They could be in a totally different standard altogether. For instance, if you look at the one that's on that slide, partitioning circles, rectangles into equal shares, right? That's a geometry standard, right? And that's a second-grade geometry standard. It goes to third grade, which talks about fair shares, talking about fractions, going all the way to fourth grade, building on unit fractions and equivalence, going all the way to seventh grade. The reason why I'm talking about this is because kids learn a certain way. And we know that when I learned how to do something like long division, I, you know, I had no idea how and why long division was until I went to college, right, and learned, this is why you have these numbers here and these numbers here. I mean, do you honestly know why you do that, right? Okay? So what we do now, rather than just giving students a number and saying, this is what we do because that's what we do, because it's math, right? There's something called concrete representational abstract. And we've been trying to infuse that into all of our... Really, when we're opening up a topic, we want to open it up with the CRA sequence. So concrete meaning that the students have something concrete to manipulate. Representational would be like drawing, like they bring it from something physical to a two-dimensional drawing. Like sometimes we've all helped our kids and we'd said, okay, four minus two, you have four circles here, take away two, you just did representational, right? And abstract, that's bare number, okay? So that's the continuum that students learn math best and retain it and do the best moving forward, okay? So we've been trying to infuse that and make sure that that sequence is in our math at the elementary school. So in order to do that, you need to have manipulatives. You need to be trained. You need to know what you're doing. So that's why I brought these ladies here. So there's different types of manipulatives. There's discrete, non-proportional, proportional, continuous. It's all very exciting.
Yes, I'm so excited to show everyone some of our manipulatives that we use every day. And if you don't mind, I would like to come up and actually give you some of the manipulatives that we use every day in our classrooms to show you how it goes. Okay?
So just like with our students, we wanted you to see it, feel it, touch it, because that's the best way that you learn, probably.
Now, I know this may seem like there's no way that we could possibly use all of these manipulatives in one class, but we're telling you every single day, everything you see in here, we use. And we'll kind of show you why.
These were when I was learning. Maybe I would be so terrible at them. I do have a collection.
So the manipulatives that you have in front of you, they're all based on the Base Ten system. So in public school in Massachusetts, that's the basis. So you can see the ones in front of you. And Ms. Cole, if you, you can come up here and leave a problem about it. This way they can hear you.
Sure. So in first-grade math, as you can imagine, the first things that we're learning in September are addition and subtraction from numbers one to 10. So how we do that, when Julie is talking about the concrete ways that we do that, if you look inside your bag, you are going to find some what are called Unifex cubes. So there are these cubes right here. I would love for you to take them out. They're just simple cubes. You might have some different colors. Okay? So what we would do in first grade is we would simply take these cubes, pass them out, and then give them an addition problem. Let's say two plus three. And obviously, as you can see, they're very tactile, very hands-on. Students are going to take two cubes, put them down, going to take the other three cubes, put them down, and obviously, put them together. When we're starting off, we would probably do different colors, but then, as we move along, they'll actually understand that you don't need two different colors. You can actually do a two-in-one, right? So there's my concrete. Then, as time goes on, we're going to take out what is called the 10 frame. And these are very fun. So we want the students to be able to visualize ways to make 10. So one of the sides is actually showing you 10 squares. The other side, we're trying to find out ways maybe to make 20 or numbers within 1 to 20. The fun thing about the things that we have here is that these little counters are magnetic. So as you can imagine, with having a lot of first graders or six-year-olds, if these were not magnetic, I would have these all over my classroom. But we're lucky enough, and you can even take yours out and use them, that they are magnetic and they hold right up to this board. Kids love them. I use them every single day in my class. So now, this is sort of like that representational. So instead of saying, okay, take two cubes, we're actually going to say, all right, let's just find ways to make 10. Or, you know, what are the ways that you can make 10? And so they might do five plus five, seven plus three, as you can imagine, right? So after that, we also, and this is as of most recently, you're going to move on to the more abstract concepts. And we have these, what are called wrecking wrecks. I don't know if you guys remember these from, you know, a long time ago, but now they're pretty updated. We even have this large teacher one that can be put. It's magnetic. It goes on off my board, so all the kids can see it. And this is going to show them equality, right? We're learning about equity in the classroom. So we're saying nine equals nine. I'm going to take it a step further and I'm going to say, okay, seven plus two, is that going to give me the same number or the same answer as six plus four? And they can actually see, is this going, is this equal or not? So for those kinesthetic, hands-on type of learners, these manipulatives, we use every single day, and it helps them so much. So we just wanted to kind of show you this. As they move on, obviously, Melissa is a fourth-grade teacher, and she's going to show you what they do in fourth grade.
Good evening. So for fourth grade, some of the stuff in the lower grades, the manipulatives, would be actually used in more advanced math skills. So for example, Base Ten blocks, we would use those actually for, even for long division. And that actually is not in your bag, unfortunately. But we also use, one of the things I've been working with my students right now is on fractions. And as Ms. Paceto had showed before, one of the introductory topics for fractions for fourth grade is equivalent fractions. So in your bag, you have fraction tiles. So I know there's a lot of little pieces. But for example, all the tiles equal one whole. You can actually see up on the PowerPoint, it shows them all lined up. So for example, the top strip, sometimes the colors vary depending on the set, but that model actually shows red, and that's what mine is too. So you could say, okay, this is a whole. And then, to show the equivalencies, well, how many halves make a whole? So you have one half plus one half equals a whole, which the students also make the connection as well, that you have two halves equal the whole. We also use for geometry, we have Geo boards, which are pictured above. And when we get to measurement, the students also, we work with the scales. You can see on the upper right-hand corner as well. And then actually, one of the things that Mrs. Cole has here too, she had also, just to give an example, so I actually taught third grade last year. These can also be used to teach multiplication. So students, again, as you progress, the students, we try to get them to use these counters, and they have the two sides to kind of make a race. You could do three rows of three. And eventually, the students start drawing them to get the more representational on paper. And then eventually, they can transfer, okay, the equation, three times three equals nine.
Thank you, ladies. So as you can see, you can see a little, kind of, to sum it up, the concrete, obviously, is the manipulatives, the counters, things that you have right in front of you. The representational is those little pictures. So drawing those pictures for your kids is very, very important. And then the abstract, that bare number. And if your child doesn't get the abstract, if a child doesn't get that abstract, where in that continuum are we missing it? And that's something that we are really working on this year. So in alignment with the district plan, that talking directly about identifying, remediating, and continuously monitoring student progress. That's how that whole through line comes in. This has been introduced through professional development during our CST, our vetted professional development time, during our grade level and vertical, our team planning time that we use. So we've been discussing this directly with our grade level teams, depending on the grade level, right? I'm not going to talk about the fourth-grade manipulatives the same way I would talk about first-grade manipulatives. And this is just from teaching math. So, you know, that's kind of what we've put together for you. And these were some pictures of, actually, when I went to take some pictures last Friday, when I was talking to these ladies, they actually were, this is not staged, they were actually using those manipulatives. So I just wanted to show you that this is, you know, these things are very important to us. And that continuum, that progression, is extremely important. And I feel like that aligns directly with what Dr. Bailey's plan is because you need to figure out where that remediation is. If somebody doesn't know three plus two is five, you don't keep saying, well, three plus two is five. That's not going to work. You need to show them, go back to where that continuum is. So, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I know every bank is sort of a company. Is this a form of Montessori approach?
This is just from, no. This is just, honestly, I've taught math since 1998. So this is just some pedagogical knowledge that I've accumulated over the years. And I just wanted to share it with the grade levels to make sure that we were using the manipulatives correctly, not just on the first day that we teach addition. And sometimes teachers will come to us with, but he doesn't know how to count to 100, but he doesn't know this. So we kept incurring these problems, right? And I would kind of come back and say, well, where are we in the continuum? That's when we figured out that we had some gaps to fill. So that's where we're at.
But I root back, so go way back.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, this is great, thank you. It's helpful. And I just, I mean, any way that you can provide a hands-on, bad experience, experiential type learning, I think is always best for our kids.
Absolutely.
So I think this is great. Thanks for letting us experience it.
Absolutely.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to come grab those.
Yeah. No, I can't. Take these. Play them.
And just going along with, you know, what we do with the budget here at this group, it's not just textbooks that we utilize. So when you see things in the budget, the resources that we utilize is things like this that we have to account for in our budget. So, but great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, I'd like to call Mr. Missler up to give us a technology update.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. It's a tough act to follow. I do not bring any gifts or any kind of cool stuff. I apologize. You guys are awesome. Quick updates. It was a shorter month, so this isn't a huge to-do. Just a few pieces of, that kind of go over what we found during our audit. We did have some infrastructure hiccups over the previous month of our main switches at AES stopped functioning, which then impacted cameras, et cetera. And I just made a note that with our AG equipment and kind of the power Rogers, et cetera, this is going to continue happening, which is why we're putting forward for next year's budget, our infrastructure needs. Within that, it's, I think I mentioned E-Rate last meeting. E-Rate is where we get discounts based on our school free reduced lunch counts. Acushnet is actually a 60% district, which is fantastic for us. That means we get 60% back, and our top number, for instance, is 160,000 we get off of our main eratable amount. So if we submit 200,000, we get 160,000 back off of that number. So we're putting that forward. That number's going to be on there. The 60% is going to come off that when we go forward. So that just kind of gives you guys an update and also lets you know kind of the inner workings of the network. For MCAS, MCAS is on our radar. It's never too early. We've had meetings with the principals, Angie Curriculum Director, et cetera, to kind of go over things. They're fantastic. These guys have done it before. They're pros. We looked through all the sessions. Everything's set up properly. We did some testing on the network. We're good to go on that as far as the MCAS training goes. We whipped up a couple of how-tos for our teachers and any new staff that come into the district, or just refreshers for teachers as well, on how a student can access TestNav. TestNav is how they take the MCAS test. Basically, our goal in the tech department is to kind of create these how-tos to make little procedures simple, easy to follow, so everyone's kind of on the same page. So we've got that in place. Phone system update. We're still working with a vendor on that. I have gotten a little bit deeper into that. We do have, we spend some money on Verizon. We spent some money on Comcast for POTS lines. If you ever heard that line, it's called plain old telephone system. Your phone systems will call them a POTS line. So we have quite a bit of different systems in this district. The goal moving forward with a new phone system will be to bring that all together, have one bill under this house, so we're not paying Comcast for 10 phone lines, Vertical for 10 phone lines, Verizon for five phone lines, et cetera, et cetera. So that's kind of, that's going to be coming soon. I'll give you more data as we get a little bit further in that. And the goal with that system, again, is to have a tried-true system that's robust and will last 10, 15, 20 years. We're looking at the industry standards. There's a system called a Via IP Office. You use it pretty much, and a lot of municipalities have it. It hits all the state requirements, and there's actually going to be some more requirements coming out soon based on some things that are happening in our world today. So whatever system goes in place, we'll have that covered. And then the last piece would just wish you guys, you know, a happy 2023, and it's great to see you. Any questions from me?
Questions here? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Missler. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, we have an out-of-state field trip request that needs a vote. Grade four will be traveling to Mystic Aquarium in Connecticut on June 8th. So you have the form in front of you, and I would just ask the committee for a vote. So will you push that through?
I could request a motion, please, to approve the field trip request on June 8th to Mystic Aquarium in Connecticut.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next up is just an update. You had the evidence collection form that looks like this, and I resented out. I've updated it. It's from last year and this year for each of the goals. So goal number one, during the last two, this year and last year, all students will receive consistent access to grade-level work with targeted scaffolds and interventions to make grade-level standards accessible as measured by, and I think the most important sort of area after that is to look under evidence. And it basically outlines every agenda, school committee agenda, that, you know, what aligns to that particular goal, okay? And the same holds true for goal number two. That's a lot of PD that has to do with professional development. And again, you look under evidence, and you can see all of my meetings, all of the professional development that I continue to do. You know, I have to say, we're very lucky in this state. The amount of professional development that is provided to us is wonderful. So I feel very supported in that area. Goal number three is a sense of belonging. We'll foster a sense of belonging and partnership amongst students and families as measured by student and family surveys, attendance data. So again, you go to evidence. We do surveys. We see how students are feeling at the beginning of the year, and we compare that to the end-of-year results. And the goal is always to see a climb up improvement on that. And then, of course, the last goal is about the environment and keeping everyone safe, to provide a safe and healthy learning environment that prioritizes the well-being of every Acushnet Public Schools community member during the global health pandemic. So again, you go to evidence, and you can see, you know, the work has continued. And I've thrown in there some safety things, Alice, anything that pertains to that goal, you'll see is in there. So it's basically, this document is updated right through this, tonight's meeting, and I will continue to update it as we go along. Does anybody have any questions about this process? We're looking to streamline it a little bit better next year. We have, we're looking at new software, actually, for our school committee that does this automatically with every agenda item, and all school committee members would be trained and have access to it. And I've already looked at it. It's much easier than doing a separate document. But for now, this is what we have. Any questions? No? You can see that we're all...
Most progress.
I have a great team here in Acushnet, so I don't take credit for all the wonderful things that are going on. I'm very, very blessed and fortunate to work with outstanding administrators, teachers, support staff, everybody. You know, we have a great team in Acushnet, so I'm very, very happy about that. So thank you.
Dr. Bailey, when is the evaluation?
It's at the end of this school year.
Okay.
Okay. And as I've talked about before, if there's any concerns or, you know, issues, you can call me, just like with teachers, I don't want any surprises. I don't think I'll have any surprises, but, you know, I appreciate any concerns that you have in advance. Okay?
And will we, this will be rated on? This is a two-year evaluation.
It's a summative.
So when we did the CEPY in the last year, we just kind of like, how are we tracking?
Well, it still counts because I have to turn in the ratings to the state, so it still counts. But this particular evaluation cycle is a two-year cycle, which is what they recommend for superintendents after three years. Now that it's my fifth year, believe it or not. Now it goes really fast. Any other questions on that? Okay. All right. I just wanted to let you know, the ESEA celebration, that is the recognition by the state that our elementary school is being recognized as a national ESEA distinguished school. So we're really proud of that recognition. We're going to be celebrating with our staff, 10 to 11 on January 25th. The school committee is invited. I sent out the invites today. You know, we invited many people, so we're just waiting for the RSVPs, but it should be a really nice turnout. The Commissioner of Education is scheduled to speak. The Deputy Commissioner of Education is also scheduled to speak. So it should be a really nice event held at the elementary school. And it's really to celebrate our students and our staff for getting this because, again, this wasn't something that just happened overnight. This was years of work and building, strengthening our plans, and it's come to fruition that the state recognized the elementary school. And they only recognize two schools in the state. And my understanding is there's between 1,800 and 2,000 schools in the state of Massachusetts. So to be one of two schools recognized on a national level, I think it's very prestigious, and I think it's something that our whole community can be proud of.
Absolutely. It's really exciting.
It's very exciting, for sure. So on that note, one of the requirements that we had to do, as you know, four of us will be traveling to Indianapolis. We had to make a two-minute video that highlights the elementary school and basically explain how we got this award. And they actually gave us a template of, really, you should answer these questions. So we put a lot of work into this. We had it professionally done because we thought this was something that we'd be really proud of, and we think that you're going to like the results. So I have this video unveiling today, and we're really going to unveil it for the staff and the students on January 25th, and then release it to the cable, that they can play it on local cable. But I hope you enjoy the video. It just highlights all of our amazing community.
We're located in Acushnet, which is a small town on the south coast of Massachusetts. Our district is pre-K through eight, and our Title I school is pre-K through four, with 49% of our students identified as high-need. Our mission is to promote students' success and growth in a supportive environment. We are focused on building a sense of belonging by creating relationships. Our staff and students are proud of us. We have multi-tiered systems of support in place to address all learners. And our teachers collaborate on a regular basis so that they can deliver the highest-quality tier-one instruction. We have a team of teachers, special educators, counselors, interventionists, and support staff who all come together on a regular basis so they can rapidly identify students and figure out the best course of action for each differentiated need. Our schedule allows for regular collaboration during our curriculum support time. Our schedule allows for regular collaboration during our curriculum support time. Teachers share problems to solve, and we solve them together. We have powerful teachers. They are empowered and encouraged to seek out learning experiences that will enhance their practice. Everyone who walks into the building is part of a dedicated team, and everyone is part of the reason for this recognition. Our students are at the center of all decision-making, and they are the real superstars who deserve this recognition for their perseverance and resiliency over the past few years. We are proud to be recognized as a distinguished school. None of this would be possible without all of the contributions from our stakeholders who are always promoting and supporting the Wildcats.
So it, I'm sure you'd also enjoy the outtakes. We had a full day of videotaping with our students and, you know, doing the taping of Mrs. Chesney and Ms. Passato, but I think it was a lot of fun, and I think it highlights how wonderful our school community is. So do you have any questions on that, on that video that we had done that's been submitted? And we will see that playing at the national level, but it's going to be released now. You know, the Nationals will be sending out a press release. We're sending out a local press release that we're one of two schools that was selected at this, for this national recognition, and celebrating with the staff and students on the 25th. And I'm really hopeful that all of you, you know, I got your RSVP, I'm hoping that all of you can make it on that day.
I would not miss it. It's very exciting.
And I have you speaking, if you don't mind, just saying the words. Is that okay?
Yep, my pleasure.
All right, great. On behalf of the school committee. All right. Any questions about that?
Will it be available for all townspeople to view on television?
Absolutely. So we have cable who will be agreed to record, and they will be able to show it on the local channel, so for sure. I mean, unfortunately, we don't have the space. We would love nothing more than to invite all of our families too for this, but we don't have the space. So we thought by having cable, we could at least post it on the local channel for them to watch. It is something to be proud of, because it's not often that the commissioner's coming down to a school to speak, and same with the deputy commissioner. I know for a fact they both rearranged their schedules to be here for this event, so I spoke to him in person about it, and he, they both want to be here, so we're excited to have them.
Yeah, really exciting. Did you have a question or a comment, Mr. Tev?
No, I just thought that better than cable access might be like a YouTube channel with links on, like town YouTube site or whatever it is.
You mean showing it on?
I think, yeah, I mean, you could do a, I don't think press releases are very formal anymore. I think it's just kind of a post on, you know, local boards or whatever, and then people click on it. I think that would be the best way to get it out. I don't even know what channel cable access would be on my.
Oh, okay.
Do we have a YouTube channel?
We do.
We did at one point in time.
We did at one point in time, especially during COVID.
Yeah.
But I would definitely, based on your feedback, talk to Mr. Missler.
I don't think many parents would know, like, because.
Well, our plan is to, obviously, we're going to promote the video, for sure. We'll put that link right out there on our social media. We have a lot of followers on that. We're working with a professional PR person who's helping us with all the press release information and such, and we're planning on having media that day, because again, this is a big deal. This is something to be proud of, so. But I think what I'll do is, based on that, I will speak to Mr. Missler about how else can we get it out for people to see. You know, I know we're doing a lot of work and talk about our website in the coming weeks, so I definitely think this is something that should be featured on either YouTube, our website, wherever, social media, so.
Yeah. Just as an embedded in the, on the AES homepage or something.
Right.
Get a lot of traction, I'm sure.
And I know Mr. Missler will do whatever he can to make sure that we have a publicity that, so.
When did you say the conference in Indianapolis was?
We leave January 31st, and we're gone, we come, we return February 4th. 31st to the 4th.
And what, in the conferences, all of the schools that are recognized across the country?
Yes.
Right? Are coming together, and are you having professional development during that time?
Yes, it's all professional development. Actually, we have a meeting with our group just to go over who's going where, so we can make sure we kind of conflict divide a little bit and get everything out of it that we can. And as you saw from my last newsletter, we do have people that are sort of shifting in the district to make sure that everything's covered in the district. Mr. McIntyre will be in charge while I'm away, and.
Are we sure we want to do that?
I will tell, I'm not going to tell him you said that. He is ready and willing, and Ms. Bettencourt and Mr. Gallivan will certainly be helping out at the elementary school, so I feel very confident that everything's going to run business as usual.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but thank you for that feedback, Mr. Tev. All right. Other items that may not have been anticipated, I, we just got word that we received, we were awarded with the FY23 Math Acceleration Academy grant of $65,000. So that, again, will go towards our Math Acceleration Academies for February and April school vacation weeks. And as you know, we've run those academies in the past. We've seen a bump up in our math scores, and we like to think that this is really helping. We identify those children that are, you know, based on data, not just one test, but a bunch of information that the teachers have and the principals have, and they identify students who need this, and we put the invite out to those students, and it's at both levels, the elementary as well as the middle school. You'll have this formally in next month's packet, but we just got word, and I wanted to let you know that we were awarded the grant, so that, you'll get that in the February meeting, okay?
Okay.
And Dr. Bailey, do we, do we offer that to all students who fall into that category? So there's no exclude, like, it's, we're not limited in terms of the number of students we can offer.
Well, in a way, we are, because you have to have small class sizes, so it's based on the number of students, but it's, I don't think we've really turned anyone away in any of the academies. And I know that we've made personal phone calls to families to make sure that students are on board, and the kids have really enjoyed it. I know that the staff has done a really nice job of making it a fun week, but also in-depth, I mean, it's math all day for all the hours that they're here with one, I think with one enrichment, you know, something in between, but I don't believe we've turned anyone away. Okay? Okay. Business manager's report. Should I just keep going, right?
Keep going.
Okay. So as you know, Mr. McIntyre is at the town tonight at a meeting, so obviously, I'm not going to read through his whole report. He sent over all that paperwork, but I will just highlight what I think, you know, I'll go through it and just highlight things from his report, okay? So the first one is the FY23 budget. You'll see that we are right on track for spending. As far as budget transfers, right now, there's no transfers that would be made between major DESI account categories, so we would not require any school committee votes for that. For FY24 budget, if you recall, this sheet that you had, it was a timeline that we talked about at our last couple of meetings, we did have to push back everything pretty much by a month. So on that sheet, if you go to the January 10th, I think it's in your packet, actually.
Yeah, it is.
The difference is, you know, in the second column, it just shows you the date change, okay? So the big, the big ones to pay attention to are the January 10th is now February 7th, the February 7th is now March 7th. Everything's off by, pushed by one month. March 8th is now April 8th. But that's okay, because we started this process extremely early.
Started early.
With reason. And I know that Mr. McIntyre has, is going through the budget very thoroughly and making sure, so I think, you know, you'll be satisfied with when you get, when we get the budget during the February meeting. And I know the subcommittee, we've been meeting quite a bit. We have a couple more meetings before our February meeting, so we've had a lot of time together to sort everything out. As far as facilities, the electronic sign is up. We have some sort of template ideas or messages on it right now, but we're all having training later this week, so you'll see more interesting things, hopefully. AES roof replacement, there's really been no major changes, except that the roofers will be on campus to wrap up some, two final tasks. They're putting a metal perimeter around the roof, and the vent, I believe, is pending, but everything seems to be on track as far as the roof project, which is great. And I'm so happy that, for the video, it looked so good. We had a drone, and everything was off the roof by the time we did that video, so it looked really nice. As far as the AES tower installation, we seem to be in a holding pattern. I know that Mr. McIntyre is continuously working with the town to make sure that we can get that going, but we really need the town departments to help us make that happen. So we're working on it, but we're, it seems to be stalled a bit. As far as the solar project, as you know, the school district's been in discussion to add a solar canopy and a solar classroom to the campus between the two buildings. We got that idea during the pandemic. We saw how many classrooms and teachers and students really loved to be outside learning. So basically, the idea of this project will potentially save our schools over $1 million in electrical cost over the next 25 years, as well as provide a canopy in between the two buildings. I mean, there's a bunch of us that walk back and forth all the time for safety reasons, but the whole parking lot, basically, would have a canopy, so. But we're still working out the details with that, and I can talk more about that in a few minutes. Food service. I think the big thing to know is congratulations to our school nutrition director, Shelley Mello, again, because she's been appointed to the DESI USDA Foods Advisory Committee, where she and other school nutrition directors will basically play a very crucial role in helping DESI identify challenges and solutions to help inform policy moving forward. So Acushnet has a voice at the table, which is wonderful, and we're really super proud of Shelley, especially being in her first year as the director, to get this recognition. And I believe her first meeting is tomorrow, so we're very proud of Mrs. Mello. Transportation, I have nothing new to report. Declaration of surplus, I did have the facilities.
I do have a transportation question.
Sure.
We talked about at either the last meeting or a meeting before, starting to really look at the efficiency of routes.
Yep.
Has that process started?
And we can definitely have more in-depth discussions. That might be better for a workshop, to really look at those routes and examine that. So I can definitely put that as, if that's okay with the committee, as one of our next workshop, not the next one, because we already have things scheduled, but the one after that.
When is the next workshop? I don't believe I have that calendar.
January 24th.
Oh, yes.
You make it? Hopefully.
I will. Yes.
Okay. Okay. So as far as surplus, I'm going to need a vote, but in your packets, our facilities folks gathered items to declare a surplus, and you see the list is there, some damaged obsolete walkie-talkies, outdoor climbing wall, and some tube bulbs. So I just need a vote so that we can declare that surplus, and I just want to make mention that, as we discussed at a past meeting, that all, we'll put this online, this community surplus, to make it available during February vacation for pickup, if anyone's interested in any of the surplus for purchase, you know, a dollar, whatever. So we'll post that to our website.
All right. So we will need, if I could request a motion to approve the declaration of surplus property?
I'll make a motion. Do we need one for each document that they?
Do we need to do each individual?
If you want to, I think as long as you mention them, there's three major things.
Yep. So there are three items in the surplus declaration. We have outdoor, an outdoor climbing wall.
Damaged walkie-talkies.
Oh, yeah, the damaged walkie-talkies. Why can't I see that? Oh, they're all separate, that's why.
Yeah.
Also, if you look in the memo from the business manager's report last week.
Thank you.
Is the climbing wall going to be replaced at that point?
Yeah, I think this one was just old.
Right, that's right.
Damage, but yeah, they've been basically updating both playgrounds as things happen, but I can definitely check on that for sure.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So in summary, they are, we have the damaged obsolete walkie-talkies, outdoor climbing wall, and miscellaneous tube bulbs. Those are three items that we would be voting to approve.
So I'll make a motion on all three items.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So I already went over the budget timeline. The discussion on solar, I'll be very brief on this. Mr. McIntyre presented at the Board of Selectmen is a presentation in your packet, but basically, we've been in talks for a while now to get some solar canopies and a classroom outside. Originally, we had talked about doing this classroom project, and then we thought, wait a minute, what about solar? And we can actually do it for free. Obviously, we're going to have to spend money on making it, you know, aesthetically pleasing and all that, but it'll be a cost savings to the town as well as to the school. So what we thought we would do is invite the gentleman, the representative that we've been working with, to our next workshop meeting. At our next workshop, we're, there's two things on the agenda. It's nutrition, and we'll have Shelley Mello available, and also, we will have the representative from Solar Select, and that's January 24th. But basically, what Mr. McIntyre has done is he's reviewed contracts, and he just found that the credits weren't being applied appropriately, so he's uncovered a cost savings, again, for the school district as well as for the town. So we can get more into the weeds of that during the workshop, but I think that's good news, and it meets a lot of our needs. Any questions on that? Okay.
No, that makes sense, but I just curious, how, how long was that going on for, you think?
How long what?
How long was that going on for? Where was it getting the credit on the, what was it? Is it usage versus the?
Mr. McIntyre will be able to answer that, but I believe it's been since it's been in place.
Oh, really?
Since it's originally been in place.
Agreement was negotiated. Yes, it was quite a bit of time and quite a bit of.
It's good find.
Not, credits being applied appropriately, so not.
Right, no, I read through it in a made sense. And then, I'm, I'm new to this idea of the solar panel covering, so.
Yeah.
Just really kind of big in terms of the idea, is it to cover the parking lot, like?
It's to cover the, they have to, and I don't, again, I'm certainly not an expert, which is why I want the representative from Solar Select to speak to you, but they need to have so many panels so that it balances out the savings, like, you know, we have to have so many. So what they're talking about doing is covering the small lot near the superintendent's office. There's a small parking lot out there, doing the parking lot in between the two schools in the center, which would be inclusive of that center walkway. And again, there's all kinds of rules, like it can't be on certain surfaces, so the parking lot is good. And it will be watertight, I believe. They're looking into that. I had asked for a canopy between the school, the elementary school door near the library, and out to the street, because it only makes sense to have a continued canopy, but that's something that we're going to have to do on our own because of the regulations, because the school is right there as far as the distance between the building and the solar panels. He said if we need an extra solar panel or two, we're going to have to just find a spot, whether it's on the roof somewhere or wherever, but we'll, we'll get to that when we get to it. But he's been extremely helpful. I know that Mr. McIntyre's been working very closely with the town folks as well as the solar people on this project, and everybody who's been involved seems to think that this is the way to go, and it's a really great deal for us.
And where would you be, imagine, in the location of the outdoor classroom?
So we don't want it exactly connected to the parking lot, but it has to be sort of, because of the solar panels, it has to be connected. So we envision sort of a walk. So we envisioned sort of a walkway, but where the basketball courts and the tennis courts are, there's a piece of property, I mean, we've done our homework, we had to look what's underneath the ground as far as, you know, wires and all that, but there's a space that's right in front of that big toy, actually, so you can see it right from the parking lot. We, we can see like a walkway going up and having, you know, enough of a platform for a hundred, hundred-twenty-five people with solar panels on the top. So my concern is, you know, I want it to be aesthetically pleasing because again, it's a big area and some of the renderings that we have seen, they, you can make these things look really nice. So, you know, we would want to use our money in the ESOP grant that was approved for the greenscape project to, now that we're saving a little bit because of the solar project itself, we would want to use some money to make sure that it looks aesthetically good. And there's a lot of vetting out process for this, so, you know, it goes to the school board, like I certainly would not say we're doing it, you know? This would come to the committee before you, you would take a vote to, to give your stamp of approval, it would actually have to go to the town and it's just a process, but so far from what I'm hearing, it sounds very positive for the school and the town.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you, did you say that it was also inclusive of like the drop-off, the bus drop-off areas of that meeting?
No.
That's not.
I don't think so.
That's what I thought.
Yep. Yeah, so again, that might be an area that if they can't do that with solar, that might be something that we'd like to look into as a separate project because I still think those drop-off areas as well as the area near the elementary school library, I think needs some type of canopy, but we'd have to probably do it separately.
One question I would have with the engineer, you know, for him to answer to us.
Yeah.
Is its durability as far as with wind speed. To what wind speed will it hold together? You know, and engineers do pretty well.
So good point, I, I think there's a lot of details, like who, who owns it?
They do, the solar company owns it.
So then repairs would be?
Them.
On them, but, but to John's point, you know, thinking of safety and.
Absolutely, there's lighting. And we talked about, you know, it's very important to me that these are well-lit when, if people's cars are there and we're leaving after a night meeting, I don't want people to be going into these, you know, covered garage-like areas without any lighting, so there is lighting. And, you know, we're also identified, Ford Middle School is identified as a shelter, so that's another reason why they would consider it an emergency if something with a battery or lighting was broken, they would come out to repair.
So you're saying like the storage, for example?
The what?
So, so if it's a shelter, right, then, then those batteries can store energy that can run the, the buildings like a generator?
Yeah, I think it's separate. I mean, I think we have separate batteries, so they've been doing a lot of discussions about certain batteries, where they're going to be placed and we already have generators for that shelter, but again, I definitely would want to get into the weeds a bit more during the workshop.
Sure.
And he's, the representative is more than happy to come in, he's been coming in pretty regularly to speak to myself and Mr. McIntyre and Steve, our facilities director, so.
And did I hear correctly during the town meeting presentation that Patrick did, that it would generate so many credits because of the size of the building and the usage of the energy that that would support other departments in the town as well?
Yeah, I, I'm not exactly sure of the ratio and all that, but.
The credits could be applied to other.
Possibly.
Departments, I think that's what I heard, which is really nice.
All right, great.
Yeah. All right, and that's all I have for tonight, so thank you so much.
Great. Any reports from school committee members to share?
I'm waiting for maybe the report that I was going to discuss, discuss with the budget committee.
Great, okay.
I just wanted to mention that I am not going to seek reelection for school committee and I'm hoping that some members of town would step up and take out papers and go through the process of getting on the ballot. I think that would be important to fill that space on this committee.
Thanks, John, I appreciate that. Sometimes when people are running, it's sort of decide not to run again, it stays under the radar and then you have vacancies and it's important to get the word out there, so I appreciate that.
I think I, I might have said after our first meeting that. I think it's an important public service, that's what I'm, I'm here to do and, but, but it's also important to step aside and let somebody else come in and fill that spot, so.
I certainly appreciate your time, all of your time. I know this is volunteer work and I know that the public typically sees us meeting once a month, but we all know that it's much more than that, it's the subcommittee meetings, the events, et cetera, so I appreciate your service to the town and to this committee, so thank you. But you're still with us until the end of the year.
Gee, we had such an optimistic meeting with smiles and now we get something that's regretful.
Oh, that's not sad. But that was it. I, I hope somebody sees us and appeals to some people in town that can, there's, there's plenty of people that are more than capable and have exceptional ideas and ability that could be on this committee, so it's just a little bit of time, a little bit of effort, so.
And if you are interested now, it's the time to go to town and.
That's correct.
Get your information and.
What is it, February fifteenth, is it down there?
It's March something, so I will, I am up as well and I will make an announcement as well because I feel left out. I, I am going to seek reelection for another term on the school committee, so I think it's March.
I thought it was like Valentine's Day or something, you had to pull the papers.
March twenty-fourth.
So March twenty-fourth, if you're interested in.
They need to be back, so the papers are available now.
They're available as of last week.
Okay.
So if you're interested in joining us on the school committee.
No, we can run against Ron.
Yeah.
All right, well, great, thank you, Mr. Tebbs, and there are some communications and information outlined in your packet to reference at your own, at your leisure, and we do not have executive session tonight, so I'll just end by saying our next school committee meeting will be here in the John Tavares Library on Tuesday, February seventh at five-thirty. And if there's nothing further, we will adjourn with a roll call. Mr. Tebbs?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
And Mrs. Donning?
Yes.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you all.